Can I have the city clerk please do the roll call?
Councilmember Fox is absent at this time. Councilmember Price?
Here.
Mayor Proton Bill de la Pina?
Present.
Mayor Irwin?
Present. We have requests for continuance of any public hearing or agenda item. There are none, and we are moving on to item five, Special Presentations and Announcements, and I am going to be moving to the podium. Our first presentation tonight is very special. We have our recently retired city council member Dennis Gillette here today. Dennis, will you please join me? Always great seeing Dennis. During his tenure as mayor and city council member, Dennis was an extremely active city leader. He represented the city on numerous committees, citywide, countywide, as well as the state and national levels. Dennis's common sense approach and his knowledge from working with the city's police department at Cal Lutheran University and the Canejo Recreation and Park District Board of Directors served our community well. Tonight Dennis is being recognized for his efforts representing Thousand Oaks on the Ventura Regional Sanitation Board District. I would like to introduce the Chair of VRSD, John Sharkey, who will be making the presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. You know, those of us in public life travel through our time in office with a cohort. There are those who have the privilege to serve with us, and it has indeed been an honor to have Dennis Gillette among my cohort. He's been a man of integrity, knowledge, and ability on all the many boards on which we've served together, and I sincerely appreciate his leadership around this county. And I've brought with me today a small token of appreciation from the Ventura Regional Sanitation District, which reads, "Whereas Dennis Gillette served as the Thousand Oaks representative on the Ventura Regional Sanitation District Board of Directors from 2001 to 2011, and whereas Dennis served as Chairman of the Ventura Regional Sanitation District Board of Directors in 2003 and 2009, and whereas Dennis served as the Ventura Regional Sanitation District representative on the Triumpho Sanitation District Board of Directors from 2008 to 2011, therefore, the undersigned hereby convey sincere congratulations and appreciations to Dennis for his years of service and many contributions to the Ventura Regional Sanitation District, with best wishes for the years ahead. Signed by myself and the General Manager Mark Lawler, and sincere best wishes for the years ahead, Dennis." Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
(Applause)
Thank you very much, John, Madam Mayor, members of the council, and the staff. During my time on the Thousand Oaks City Council, this was one of the opportunities to work with a large number of other elected officials from other groups, boards, commissions, and panels, which we do on a regular basis. Ventura Regional Sanitation District has a very specific mission, doing something that is cost-effective, being able to provide services that might not be available to us as a region if we didn't go together, pool our resources, and out of that come the assets and the talents and skill set of the regional district. So, I thank all of you for allowing me to have the opportunity to serve. This is my first visit back here since I left, and it's kind of fun sitting down here watching. I'd like you to know that I really enjoy it, to all of you. Thank you so very much, John. Thank you, and please extend my appreciation to the members of the board. Thank you, Madam Mayor.[418.68][418.68](Applause)
And thank you again, Mr. Sharkey, for joining us today, and as everybody knows, VRSD is just one of the many, many things that Dennis did over his career. We're very appreciative of his service here in Thousand Oaks. Our second presentation recognizes the 2012 Teen Video Festival winner in the category of Best Recycling Documentary Public Service Announcement. The Teen Video Festival, co-sponsored by the city's youth commission and the Canejo Recreation Park District, is an excellent program to showcase the filmmaking skills of our youth. Creativity and technical ability come together to produce some impressive results, and Councilmember Price and I were lucky enough to watch the videos. There are many talented teens in this area. I would like to introduce Youth Commissioner Alyssa Leone to tell us more about the project and the winner.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, city council, and staff. My name is Alyssa Leone, and this is my third year as a youth commissioner. Last year, I was the co-chair of the Teen Video Festival. It's a pleasure to be here tonight for this presentation. The Canejo Teen Video Festival celebrates local young filmmakers. It's a collaborative project of the Thousand Oaks Teen Center and the Thousand Oaks Youth Commission. This year, we had new partners we would like to thank. Waste Management and Keep America Beautiful, who provided us with a grant that allowed us to add new recycling categories and offer scholarships, as well as movie cotheaters where our festival was held. Youth ages 13 through 19 were eligible to submit videos in various categories. These videos were screened by professionals, and awards were given based on those results. The winner of the Best Recycling Video and their school were eligible for awards. Now for the exciting part, I'd like to introduce Lisa Hemingway, Waste Management G.I. Industries Community Relations Representative. Lisa has been with Waste Management for more than 19 years and is responsible for heading the company's community outreach efforts and helping residents and businesses increase the recycling efforts. Help us in welcoming Ms. Hemingway to present the school award for Best Recycling Video.[555.23][555.23](Applause)
Thank you, Alyssa. Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, and staff. We are very proud to be part of this event. As the leading provider of comprehensive waste and recycling management services in North America, and in an effort to create greener and cleaner communities, Waste Management partnered with Keep America Beautiful three years ago to encourage local solutions that improve communities and their environments. Keep America Beautiful allows or follows a practical approach that unites citizens, businesses, and government to find solutions that advance the core issues of preventing litter, reducing waste, and beautifying our communities. Waste Management believes in these same values. Last year, Waste Management awarded the City of Thousand Oaks with a $5,000 grant to be used for a recycling project. The criteria for the grant were hands-on environmental education, recycling programs, illegal dumping, and media projects that convey the importance of stewardship, including videos. While the youth commission's Canejo's Teen Video Project definitely fulfilled these requirements. Now I would like to ask Joe Eskenos, the director-producer of the winning video, "Practice, Improve, Win," and Principal Jason Branham from Los Cerritos Middle School to join me at the podium. We are very proud to be part of this project and appreciate all of your work in producing an educational video for others to view. Waste Management works to make a positive difference for the environment and every aspect of our business. Every one of us can make a difference in our community, and it only takes one recyclable item at a time, and your video will help us to get that word out. Joe was awarded $750 for his winning video at the awards ceremony on June 24th, and at this time, we'd like to present a check for $1,000 to Principal Branham for Los Cerritos as the winning school. Thank you so much for your supporting your students in their participation in this event and for their recycling efforts.
Well, first, I'd like to thank the Canejo Teen Film Festival for giving me this opportunity to make a very important video. I'd also like to thank Pete Martinez from the Teen Center for holding the whole event and helped me along the way. I'd also like to thank my video tech teacher, Mr. White. I'd also like to thank Waste Management for creating this category. Thank you.
And I would like to... I'd just like to take this opportunity to, you know, recognize Joe and the things that he did, because I think he is an excellent representative of not only Los Cerritos Middle School, but the entire Canejo Valley Unified School District. You know, having students like himself and the things that I know he's going to do at Westlake High School as he moves forward, and just making an impact, not only on the school that he's at, but the community, I think is the things that we, as educators, all strive for, is we want students to make those positive impacts. And, Joe, thank you for everything. I appreciate it.[760.69][760.69](Applause)
TOTV, can we please play the video?
The world wants and expects us to be great. It instills in us at an early age that we should strive for our individual best. We're told, "Practice, improve, and win." We breathe life into our passions and find achievement in the various areas. But wait, are these pictures of success? Eighty percent of what Americans throw away is recyclable, yet we only recycle 28 percent. Really asking the question, is it the world versus the earth? Americans go through 2.5 million plastic bottles per hour, and of those plastic bottles end up killing 1 million sea creatures a year. Is this the best we can do, really? As we look at what humans can achieve when they come together, we know that the solution is to help the earth. We need to make more room for the earth. Let us be passionate in the area that will allow us to achieve more for everyone. How? Practice, improve, and win.
That was great, huh? Yeah. Congratulations again to both of you. Remember, if it's ooey, gooey, or chewy, it's probably not recyclable. Good night.
Oh, we're getting a picture. And the city did just recently receive a grant to work with the high schools on recycling I would like to now ask Rick Agnetti to join me, please. Participation in sports has many benefits for children. They develop the opportunity to be physically active, develop a healthy lifestyle, and physical activity helps turn kids into healthy adults. Teamwork, responsibility, independent thinking, and social skills can all be results from sports involvement. An additional benefit to sports is the opportunity to be a champion. We are very pleased to have with us here tonight the Thousand Oaks Girls Softball Association Ten U Gold All-Stars. Can we give them a big round? And this is very impressive. These young ladies are the 2012 ASA Western District State and National Champions. I would like to now reintroduce their coach, Rick, to tell us about the team and their journey to the championship. Rick?
First of all, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, city councilmembers, for this great opportunity and honor. We'd also like to thank Ted Smith, AKA Uncle Ted, for setting this stuff up with Mary and the mayor as well. As a team, as a team, we, offensively, I'm just going to go ahead and read off some numbers that we did this year, reproduced. When a team performs at a level like this, and as well as they did, it's, they allow us, coaches, to ride the coattails, and this coattail ended up in a national championship, and it's a great honor for me, as well as for the rest of the coaches. As a team, we had 376 hits with three home runs, 279 RBIs, and 102 walks, and only 87 strikeouts with 983 plate appearances. So, I mean, the numbers speak for themselves. Our on-base percentage was a 939. The team batting average was a 383. So, I mean, they did amazing. They were amazing. It was, it was, it was nice to watch 11-year-olds play like 16-year-olds. As an offensive, pitching-wise, pitching-wise, as a team, the pitching stats for 43 games were a combined total innings of 231 innings pitched. They faced 882 batters with 203 strikeouts. There were only 58 walks given up in 43 games. Our team earned run average was 1.25. So, and it goes without saying, before I introduce, as everybody knows, a coach is only as good as their players. With that being said, I'd like to start introducing Mike Monzo as our head coach, Sam Mallory as our assistant coach, and Tyler Johnson as our other assistant coach. And with that, going into the girls, our first girls, Emma Morgan. Malia Barlow. Lily Turbit. Taylor Johnson. Alexa Campbell. Emma Cardell. Megan Amati. Daya Carvahal. Leanna Delacruz. Pika Ramirez. And last, but definitely not least, seriously, congratulations, girls, on a very, very prestigious year.[1235.42][1235.42](Applause)
Okay, you got it. And for the coaches and the girls, we do have accommodation in honor of the Thousand Oaks Girls Softball Association 2002 ASA Western District State and National Champions. What an incredible accomplishment. Congratulations once more. We love to have these champions at the city council meeting. Thousand Oaks and Canejo Valley has produced a lot of good softball players, and Mayor Andy, Councilmember Andy Fox's daughter played softball also, so it has a special place in his heart. For our last item, Thousand Oaks is proud of the outstanding work done by our departments and their employees. Their commitment and professionalism help us provide high-quality services to our residents. Their creativity and knowledge help us to make the most of our resources. I'd like to ask John Smollett, Superintendent of the City's Municipal Service Center, to join me. Welcome, John. In the July-August edition of Municipal Water and Sewer Magazine, the City's Municipal Service Center was featured for its innovative and effective use of new technology. Updated tools and new techniques have transformed how wastewater collection, how the wastewater collection team does business. I will ask John to share some of those changes with us. John?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council, city staff. I want to thank you for this opportunity to provide you with a brief example of technology currently being used as the Municipal Service Center Division of the Public Works Department. As an accredited agency, we're constantly striving to innovate, create new ideas, and do a better job for the city. Through the use of this technology, we lower our opportunity costs, we're able to increase our service levels to the residents, and therefore, we operate more efficiently. These changes take place with your support, open management, dedicated, hard-working staff, great engineering group, and IT support. It places us as one of the top agencies in the nation using this technology. I have with me John Nelson. He is the wastewater supervisor, whose staff was recently recognized as the State Large Collection System of the Year, and was recently featured on the cover of Municipal Water and Sewer Magazine. Clip of that story is available for your review now, and that includes some of the GIS and the technology that we're recognized for. Thank you. With that clip?
My name is John Smollett. I'm the Public Works Superintendent for the City of Thousand Oaks, and the wastewater division is one of numerous divisions in the city that I oversee. Where we used to be based as an excavation and operations maintenance facility, now we've moved into more of the maintenance end, as our infrastructure continues to age. And our staff is using this new technology to do more work with less people and a reduced budget. So by reducing the amount of time we spend on, for example, routes by using these new nozzles, we're able to clean more in the city in a quicker time, hence resulting in better quality for our residents. We implore Q's technology for our television inspection. It's the latest in GIS and computerized maintenance management mapping. We also use a Vector combination jetting truck, vacuum and jetting, and that allows us to clean more than we would be able to if we were running a lot of these operations by hand, like they have in the past.
I'm Jim Mabry with the City of Thousand Oaks Utilities Maintenance Worker. Here, we're demoing the new 2012 Vector 2100-plus series. It's got a twin fan on it for vacuuming. The pump's a multi-flow, which goes from 40, 60, to 80 gallons per minute, and it has 600 feet of 1-inch hose. Okay, this is a remote control that Vector has that's pretty new out, and here you can run your hose reel speed, your throttle, you can enable your vacuum, your water pump, and your water pressure, all from the top. Then on the bottom here, you can do your hose reel speed, your throttle, your boom in and out, and your boom side to side. Today, we're using a twister nozzle, which cuts roots out with hydraulic water pressure. It's made by Stone Age, and we're going to be using that 80 gallons per minute and 2,500 PSI, and it takes all kinds of roots and grease out of the pipe.
I'm John Nelson, Utilities Manager and Supervisor for the City of Thousand Oaks. The nozzle we'll be using will be a Warthog. The way it operates is with high water pressure. Instead of using blades, we found that blades, if there's offsets in the pipe, will get hung up, and most likely, we'd have to dig up the street. So with this Warthog, we use nothing but high water pressure, and with the jets that spin the head of the Warthog, it actually spins and it removes all the roots that we'd like to be removed. This Vector right here, it's set up with a computer, which enables us to look at GIS, and everything is touchscreen.
We're inside of the Vector, just showing you the iWater program that we use. This actually keeps track of our sewer lines and the work that we've done throughout the year. This is all of the City of Thousand Oaks with the Newberry Park area. Everything in black is what we have cleaned with the Vector. Everything in green is what hasn't been done. So every time we go do an area, we just zoom in on the area, make a little square. Shows all the street names, all the manholes, and once we start with an area, we just highlight a run, and it'll show all the information on the run that we've done. So it'll show, you know, the diameter of the pipe, it'll show the last time it was cleaned. So the last time it was cleaned was July 5th of 2011. It shows there's no problems with it. Patrick cleaned it last, and if there's any problems with it, you know, we can click, you know, flow description, is it, did it change into heavier? Is the condition still normal? Who operated it? And then how many times we clean it?
All the information that we gathered can be accessed by myself, the superintendent, or really anyone at City Hall. If they have any questions on any pipeline, they could just simply bring it up. On the other end of this line, about 300 foot, we have a television crew. We'll be using a Q's camera, and their responsibility is to check out the condition of the pipe once we've cleaned it. They'll be checking for cracks, excessive roots that was left over from cleaning, and any deficiency within the pipe.
My name is Brian Heatherington, Senior IT Tech for the City of Thousand Oaks. What we have here is our new What we have here is our newest CCTV van from Q's. We're running the city GIS to look at all the infrastructure with the pipes. It televises and records a, up to two terabytes of data. What you have here is a compact Pipe Ranger with an Oz3 camera head being lowered down into the manhole.
My name is Jason. I work for the City of Thousand Oaks in a wastewater crew. We have here, this large camera is our steerable Pipe Ranger. It has an electronic lift, it raises up. We run the Oz2 camera on that.
Some of these small changes have had big impacts, but it's taken 10 years to get there, and it's also taken a staff that's had to go through a transition of typically not using computers where they grew up, just like me, to a time where our entire operations are based on computers. We now employ the, the latest technology in GIS and computerized maintenance management to track what we're doing, where we're doing it, and in essence, that frees up our employees so they don't have to fill out as much paperwork. We're about 90% paperless within this division, and that's, makes for a happy staff and more work.
Madam Mayor, before Mr. Gillette leaves, inasmuch as this is his first visit back to the city council, I just wanted to take a moment and thank him for his many years of service to the city. Tonight's recognition is, uh, the understatement of the century with respect to what Dennis has provided this city and some of the other agencies that he participated in. Dennis, I just want you to know, and I know I speak for the entire council, you really truly are missed. It is great to see you back in good health, with Terry by your side. The viewing public can't see it, but Dennis doesn't go far without his bride, as he would say, "Terry." And it is great to see you back. We miss you. We miss your sense of history. We miss your balance, what you brought to the council, and just, we wish you the very, very best, and don't be a stranger. All right, very good.
Can I have the city clerk please announce public comments?
This is the time and place for public comments. The speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council regarding items on the agenda or on a subject within the city's jurisdiction. All remarks should be addressed to the council as a whole, and all documents for city council and the official city record should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Under state law, public comment matters may not be considered by the council unless listed on the agenda, but may be referred to the city manager for administrative follow-up. Four people have presented cards, and pursuant to council standard, speakers are allowed three minutes. The yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
Thank you, Ms. Lawrence. Our first speaker is Dr. Richard Elsley.
Good evening. Mayor Irwin, members of the council, staff, my name is Dr. Richard Elsley, Doctor Discovery. I'm a resident of Thousand Oaks, and I'm here tonight to announce the 2012-2013 season of the Discovery Center's popular Science Speaker Series. Every day, there are more and more scientific discoveries made that will impact us in our daily lives, and it's a good idea for us to understand something about those discoveries. The purpose of the Science Speaker Series is to bring in scientists who are doing something interesting and important, and who can explain it in a way that anybody can understand and enjoy. Science Speaker Series is for the general public, college, high school students, and other mature, younger kids. Our first presentation is going to be this Thursday, two days from now. Dr. Barbara Collins is a professor at CLU. She's been a professor there for 49, count them, 49 years, and she knows every plant, every wildflower in California personally. She is an expert on California plants, and she's going to talk about California native plants, and how they have managed to be able to survive in the often hostile conditions we have here: deserts, mountain tops, oceans, ocean shores. And so she is going to talk about these plants and about what we can learn from them as we go forward trying to save water. We have four other talks this season. In November, we're going to have a talk on gene therapy. It's curing a disease you have because of a defective gene by putting the correct gene into your body. In February, we're going to have a talk on how our oceans in this area are being affected, including by all those plastic water bottles we saw. In March, we're going to have a report from four local school teachers who spent the summer doing scientific research in the rainforests of Central America, and are bringing that knowledge and that excitement back to their students, and they're going to present to us as well. And the last talk in April is going to be not Jean-Michel Cousteau himself, but his second-in-command, who is going to talk about the worldwide projects that his institute has done to help save our oceans. So the talk this Thursday is at Baxter Healthcare on Lakeview Canyon Road over in Westlake at 7:30 PM. All of the talks are at 7:30 PM. All of them in the past have been at Baxter, but the news is that as of January, we're going to switch to having them here, in the Shear Forum. So the last three of the year will be here in the Shear Forum. So that's 7:30 Thursday night. For more information, our website is science speakerseries.org, science speakerseries.org, or call 805-905-8168. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Elsley, doctor. Our next speaker is Bruce Boyer. Good evening, Mr. Boyer.
Good evening. My name is Bruce Boyer, and I live in Agoura Hills, and I'm the regional manager for Lone Star Security and Video. Of course, the city council has seen our little mobile trailers parked on Thousand Oaks Boulevard, because that is the idea. However, the city council decides that you don't like them. Well, let me try to enlighten you. I'm not here to make you happy. Those trailers serve a purpose: to advertise our firm. That's who I have a responsibility to. I don't get up in the morning and go, gee, will the city council think they're attractive enough? I miss the pledge of allegiance, but I believe we pledged allegiance for liberty and justice for all. So let me bring you up to speed. I have attempted to work with your city attorney, your city manager, Sergeant Harwood at the sheriff's department, meh, pretty much a stone wall. Well, writing me hundreds of spurious parking citations, seizing my vehicles, I don't go away. This is not my first rodeo. We have two federal civil rights lawsuits going on right now for other cities that think they can just ignore the vehicle code, violate our rights, run us through kangaroo courts like I had with your hearing examiner the other day. It's not going to do. So we are now preparing lawsuit number three, and in this lawsuit, we are going to name 19 cities, Thousand Oaks being one, four sheriff's departments, Ventura Sheriff's being one of those. So here's my offer to you. Why don't we have a public meeting? Have your city attorney, have Sergeant Harwood, have someone higher up from the sheriff's department come out. I will lay it out to you exactly how you violate the law, how you violate the court decisions, how you violate vehicle owners' rights, how you illegally seize our vehicles. Then you will have the opportunity then to know what you would have to learn the hard way, instead of paying your attorney $500 an hour of the taxpayers' money to get it hammered down to you by a judge in the Ninth Circuit Court. So that's my offer to you. Let's sit down and have an open discussion. I'll lay out the law, I'll lay out the court decisions. If you still want to be in a federal civil rights lawsuit and pay tens of thousands of my tax dollars, because I'm a Ventura County property owner too, you'll have that option. But you will not be able to, if you don't, to tell the taxpayers you didn't try to solve the problem before it bit you. I'm open, let me know.
All right, thank you, Mr. Boyer. Our next speaker is Mr. Kidway.
I begin in the name of God, who is most beneficial, most merciful. My name is Nick Egbal Kidway. Last time I checked, still director concerned, citizen of Thousand Oaks. Honorable mayor, uh, if you go out on the streets, you would not know that there's a council election in less than 50 days. If TO TV will show my overhead, this is from the, uh, primary held a few months ago, that definitely is a violation of the code, cannot, and if you go to Ventura, Mr. Roper, who has no name recognition, even though he was a fire chief, you'll, every 500 feet, you'll see a sign, because the sign, ordinance allows it. It's an inexpensive way for candidates to get their name across. Unfortunately, everyone on the dais, including the, uh, the administration, has turned a blind eye for 10 years to change this pro-incumbency ordinance, which does not even allow, I mean, talking about unconstitutionality, a candidate to have two signs next to each other. They have to be 100 feet apart. I mean, can you believe that? This is the United States of America. This is how the businesses are violating it. If TO TV can show the, uh, the most tacky and most disgraceful sign is to put it on the top of the building. This is the Wendy's on, uh, hamburger, and they had taken the sign off. I'm glad that Claudia is smiling, but it's not a smiling matter. They should be fined. Things are not that great. I mean, the chamber is empty, people think everything is, is great, the people are in support of you. TO TV, I'm not done, I appreciate your help. That's the planning commissioner that was fired, yes, fired, because she voted against the, uh, auto mall sign. People have forgotten it, it's not being put out there, it will come on after the election, which will destroy our city. One of the main reasons I'm here is, with the balance of my time, is that in Camarillo, right now, at 7:30 on Tuesday, there is a wonderful hearing to hear input from citizens about the Caneo Creek project. When it said Caneo Creek, when I first read it, I thought it was Thousand Oaks, but this is down the grade, and this is another Amundson Ranch. We stopped that, we can stop this project. Right now, I have to go to Ventura to see my grandchildren, it takes me, when there's traffic, 40 minutes. Normally, it takes 20 minutes. This will be like making Ventura County like, uh, like West LA. There'll be traffic gridlock, and it's not about property rights. I was opposed to SOR, one of the parcels is, comes under SOR, but they don't have to vote it, there's exceptions. And then they are also going to add more retail and more institutional projects, which is the cannibalization of the existing businesses, because there ain't no need for it. People stop that and help, and join us in working against this project.
Thank you, Mr. Kidway. Our last speaker is Rhoda Rabadi.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for allowing me to take a few minutes to address the issue. I have a business at Newberry Park, it's, there is a project going on, it's called Wendy Project. This issue, it happened for a few months in the beginning of the year. First, they have built a, a block in the street which they, blocking the customer driving into my station. I am not getting any business. Now, with widening the freeway, and they're adding the street or the AFRAM, it's the, with the customer, they're blocking it, and they, especially with their equipment and with their trucks, it's really hard for customers to drive into the business, and that is hurting my business. I agree that we need to widen the street, I agree with you, you need to have that project going, which is, that is fine, but at the same time, I can't stay in business. I can't open my doors, I can't even pay my rent anymore, and I need the City of Thousand Oaks, the attorney, the council member to help me, compensate me for my loss. Help me with the loss that I've been hit badly, to keep my doors open till the project is done. So I need someone to direct me, I'm not sure if you guys are going to help me. If not, if I have to hire an attorney, I will, which, I don't even have the money to pay him, but I have to get some help, because I do need to stay in business. And I am a tax member, and I, you do need the businesses in the city, so by running a project and closing other businesses, that, it doesn't work. So it's, please see if, you know, how you could help me out.
Ms. Rabadi, the city manager will address your issues.
Thank you.
He'll address all public comments right now. Or most public comments. Yes.
Thank you very much. I need to go back, right? Yes?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, with respect to the Caneo Creek project referenced in Camarillo, we did share with council a copy of the letter that staff from the Planning Division with the City of Thousand Oaks submitted for the planning commission hearing coming up in Camarillo. Some of the early versions of the EIR that's being prepared, or the work that's being done on the project. There are potentially significant impacts of this project, not just in Camarillo, but in Thousand Oaks, especially on the 101 freeway and other roads. So we are aware of those, we are reviewing the proposed, the proposed project. It's in, in the very, very early stages, but there are significant concerns, and where appropriate, the City of Thousand Oaks will continue to review and weigh in, and if we need to, we'll bring it to council's attention. But the speaker did address something that is quite significant for our region. Oh, and then the, um, the speaker on the 101 Wendy Overpass Bridge project, I'm going to ask that our Public Works Director, Jay Spurgeon, talk to you tonight, if that's possible. I know you guys have the upcoming agenda item. He will talk to you tonight, and then as, and potentially have you come in tomorrow or another day this week to, to talk further. But I do want to remind the public that when we do big projects like this, there are clearly significant impacts during construction. We reach out to the members of the business community, meet with them directly, have public meetings and that type of thing. So we will definitely follow up and make you aware of the timeframe, and try to answer your questions to the best of our ability. Thank you.
All right, the consent calendar, does anybody want to pull anything? Mr. Price?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'd like to pull seven C and E.
Would you like to move the rest of the consent calendar?
Oh, sorry.
No, 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 I'm sorry. Speakers, we have two speakers. Mr. Kidway?
Nick Kidway, resident of Newberry Park, speaking on the consent calendar, honorable mayor. If TO TV can help me again, this is the minutes from last week's meeting, uh, that is on the consent calendar. That's a lot of people, that's all staff. That's one of the reasons it costs so much money to run a council meeting, and I for one cannot understand why this meeting is being held with one agenda item, because the city has gone to fewer and fewer meetings, because it's sat buildout, and, uh, I know, I hardly get any meat, any answers, but this concerns taxpayer costs. Regarding, oh, TO TV, this is the back of the same minutes, there's the motion, there's my name, I gave a document that is registered, but look at how long the motion is. The other motion also is, so the city is not scared to type out things, but they want to hide what citizens are saying. Like this gentleman who was here about, he made a presentation about, about the cars. If you read the minutes, you will never be able to tell what happened in the meetings. This is completely un-American. I say, Mr. Fox, please remove the American flag and the California flag, just keep the Thousand Oaks flag. Why disgrace the flag when you do these kind of things? I mean, and every meeting, it is done, and there's no change, it doesn't cost any money. I don't know, where is the Tea Party? Where are those people that are against tax frivolous spending? Where are those people that are against tax frivolous spending? Number D, there's a change order for $105,000. I mean, you know, I'm kind of naive. I don't know the ropes, but I do read, and the Ventura County blog has an interesting thing, that one of the tricks about these change orders is that on the last day of, of a bid, I won't say the name, but influential council members call the public works director and find out what is the lowest bid. But the lowest bid is X. Councilman's friend submits a bid lower than that, is granted the bid, and lo and behold, that's why we have so many change orders, because after getting the bid, then they go after like sharks and increase, increase, come up with change orders, and they are not even discussed. They are routinely, that's what consent calendar has done. And this is a charge it's on, Ventura County blog, I, this person seems to know what he's talking about. F, buses, $571,000. This is the free money. I mean, that's what people complain all the time. Why are we, these empty buses? Big buses, empty buses running? This is it, because the federal government will give you free, free buses, but they won't give you what you need. Number I, I'm sorry, the gentleman has gone, the speed limits. Five, zero vote. There's nobody that seems to care that 20 people that are on the Ventura County blog that wrote about, that, that, that the speed limit thing is basically a tax for tickets.
Thank you, Mr. Kidway. And then our next speaker on public comments is Mr. Bruce Boyer.
Bruce Boyer from Aguirre Hills, again. You know, looking at your consent calendar, it would be nice if you actually explained to people what some of these things are. Ordinance amending sections, and then you list all the different sections. See, you all, of course, get to read them, and for those folks playing along at home, they really have no idea what this is, so of course, they tune it out. Now, cynical person might suggest that that's exactly what you want them to do. You don't want them to know what's going on. I'm not completely cynical. I'm just a realist. I've dealt with enough city councils. So here's my comment on your ordinances. As a representative of the National Motorists Association, we know exactly what this is. This allows cities to decide what the speed limits need to be, because Sergeant Harwood needs to be busy writing more tickets with the sheriff's department, because if they don't write more tickets, my gosh, there's just not gonna be any money in the pension funds. It's all about revenue enhancement. I know. Go tell everybody it's about safety. Keep lying to them. They are believing it, but some of them are opening their ears, and they figured it out. I liked the article in the paper the other day where it mentioned that your Sergeant Harwood decided to write somebody a cellphone ticket for photographing Sergeant Harwood with his cellphone. Now, that's the kind of law enforcement that we need, all those dangerous people out there. Sergeant Harwood needs to write him a cellphone ticket for taking a picture of him. And in their sting operation, they wrote a dozen cellphone tickets. Oh, well, I gotta tell you, I'm thoroughly impressed. I feel so much safer to know that my tax money went for that. Now, didn't it used to be that it was perfectly legal to speak on a cellphone? I mean, I was in the cellphone business back in 1989. We had mobile car telephones, but why did it become illegal? Same thing you're doing here. It's about revenue. Let's find a way to stick it to the motorist, and that's what it's all about. Let's change the speed limits. That's what you're doing. Why don't you actually go out there and run it in the paper and let people know that you want to adjust the speed limits downward, so that they can pay even more outrageous fees? Yeah, I got a, I got my first speeding ticket in 20 years. 62 miles an hour in a 55. Oh, what a terrible driver I am. $287, Mr. Boyer, for 62 in a 55. Why? Because the city and county and state employees needs their pensions funded, and it must be my job to pay for it. And that's what this is all about. It's just another revenue grab. I know, you're gonna tell people it's about safety. Keep telling them. They are believing it, but as again, some of them are figuring it out. Why don't you go over to traffic court and speak to the people there? Tell them who you are, but bring a sheriff's deputy for safety.
All right. Can somebody move the mind? Mr. Price?
I would move, I would move the balance of the consent calendar.
Vote, please. And then we have Mr. Price, item 7C. Oh, I'm sorry.
The motion carries four zero, and the ordinance title for I is an ordinance amending sections 4-3.51, 5.8, 4-3.516, 4-3.517, 4-3.532.5, and 4-3.546.3A of Article 5, Chapter 3, Title 4 of Thousand Oaks Municipal Code, relative to speed limits, MCA 2012-70295.
Mr. Price, 7C.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I know that this, this item was discussed at a previous council meeting, and it seemed as though with Marriott pulling out of the concession services with the theaters, that that was gonna create a, a problem, and we were given a very short fuse on that. And I just wanted to have you explain to the public who may be watching, and those who may be in attendance, shine a little light on some of the creative thinking that took place that caused us to come up with this, what I think is a creative idea.
Okay. Thank you, thank you very much, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Price, and members of the council. As you will remember, back then in June, we reached an impasse with Marriott in our attempts to extend their contract. As a result, with a very short time window, we found ourselves with no concessionaire to operate concessions in either of the theaters. We looked at a variety of options at the time, which included going back out with an RFP for an outside concessionaire. We also reviewed the feasibility of bringing concessions in-house. After holding meetings with a variety of city departments, including human resources, the city attorney's office, city manager's office, and finance, we determined that there actually was a lot of benefit to bringing concessions in-house and basically having more control over them. Ultimately, we've utilized our foundation, the Thousand Oaks Civic Arts Plaza Foundation, to serve as our new concessionaire. That was really done for several reasons. Foremost, as a nonprofit, the foundation is able to hold the liquor license, which means that even if a year down the road, we should determine we want to go back to an outside concessionaire, by holding the liquor license, that will minimize any disruption during a transition between concession operations. The other real benefit is the fact that we'll be capturing all of the revenue, revenue that used to be, go to Marriott with a small percentage coming to us. By having that revenue go to the foundation, the foundation actually exists for the benefit of both of the theaters. It, in the past, has been in existence to primarily present performances at the theater, such as the Kobe Calais concerts and the like, but we recently expanded the mission so that it now can also fund capital needs projects. So with this new source of revenue coming to the foundation, we'll be able to hopefully do some upgrades at the theater that otherwise couldn't happen because the funding isn't available through the city's general fund. I can tell you in just the short two weeks that the concessions has been operating again, we've already realized more profit than what we typically would have gotten in a single month's operation with Marriott, so it's already proven to be a very effective source for us. I think the thing that's very commendable, particularly to me as a new employee of the city, was the way that all the city departments came together and the kind of thought process that went into play. John Adams with Finance came up with the idea of working with Eagle, who manages the golf course on behalf of the city. They're doing some of the administrative and accounting services for us, which keeps our costs down. And Patrick Hehar from the city attorney's office really worked very hard to help us secure the liquor license in a very cost-effective manner. So I, I think it's a good example of how a city and all the city departments can come together, and ultimately, a bad situation has become a win for the theaters and a win for our patrons as well.
Absolutely. Thank you very much, and good, good job.
Would you like to move it?
I would move 7C.
Okay. Vote, please.
Vote carries four zero.
Councilmember Price, 7E.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for indulging me here as the, the freshman on the dais here. I just had some questions, and I think, I think I understand it, but I just want clarification. I know that the RFP went out, and that there were a number of responses to that, and that during the process, it appears to me that, from what I read, that it was a local company that actually came in with the lowest bid, but that was challenged by the second lowest bidder, and that they were not completely responsive to the RFP. So I, I understand how that process went. I'm, I'm wondering, I also noted that there was a change, that we're now going to ask for LED lights as opposed to another light source that was in the previous RFP. I'm just curious whether or not there's any liability to the city in doing that, and maybe that's a question that's better directed at the city attorney, but if you can answer it, go ahead.
Madam Mayor, council, good evening. Specifically, is it the lights that are adding the, the additional liability? Is that the question? Or is it more just about rejecting the bids?
Yeah, it's just, it's about the rejection of the bids when, I, I just assume that we would go down in order and then take the lowest responsive bid.
And, and typically, that is, that is the case. However, sometimes bids are rejected, and, and oftentimes, you, you, the first bidder, the low bidder, may not have a complete document. You go to the second bidder. And in this particular case, and, and what we've seen a lot more of lately, is because of the economy, the bidding environment is such that we're getting a lot of, I'll say, less experienced bidders bidding public works-type project. This particular project is a little more complicated in that the bid forms include federal highway administration requirements, as well as federal transit agency requirements. So the bid documents end up being very complicated, very involved, a lot different than just writing your bids down, and you have to submit DBE forms and all kinds of different things. And because of that, in this particular case, we noticed that the first bidder had difficulty and the second bidder had difficulty. So we felt that it would be better to reject all the bids and, and try to even that playing field, clarify the requirements of these bid documents, and put it out for a full rebid.
If I could just follow up, Councilmember Price, in answer to your question with respect to the liability, cities have the ability to reject all bids for any or no reason. In this case, staff found not only that the first bid was non-responsive, which we had to reject by law, but also found that there was, some needed clarification on a provision of the bid specs. So rather than try to clarify it, you know, through an addenda process, it's much simpler to just reject the bids and start over.
Thank you for the education. I appreciate it. I would move 7E.
Vote.
Motion carries four zero.
All right, we have no public hearings this evening, so we are on to Department Report 9A, Herb's Road Improvement Project, and Mr. Finley, our Deputy Public Works Director, will be presenting the report. Mr. Finley?
Yes, Madam Mayor, council, good evening. Before we begin this evening is, as you've said, myself, Cliff Finley, the Deputy Director of Public Works, and with me is Mike Tahidian, Senior Civil Engineer in our design section. First of all, the portion of, of Herb's Road that this project involves extends from Thousand Oaks Boulevard to Fallmouth. There's a long history of this project. Back in 1997, the city council actually reduced the, the project from, or, excuse me, reduced Herb's Road from a four-lane designation to a two-lane designation. In 2005, there was actually an EIR certified for this project. In 2006, the city approved a design agreement for the design of the improvements on Herb's Road. In 2010, the city approved some right-of-way purchases, and in 2011, the design was completed. Finally, in 2012, the grant funding was approved. The project objectives were originally to address transportation safety concern on Herb's Road between Thousand Oaks and Fallmouth. The idea was to widen Herb's Road from Hillcrest, on Hillcrest Drive intersection to improve the level of service, to provide sidewalks for pedestrian safety, to provide bike lanes for bicycle safety, and to provide an equestrian crossing. The purpose of the project was to, to make this section of Herb's Road retain its rural feeling. Additionally, it was important that we underground all the utilities along this section of Herb's Road. This is a drawing showing the, the limits of the project. Again, it serves from Thousand Oaks extending north through the Hillcrest intersection. There's a widening of the Hillcrest intersection, and then extending up to Fallmouth Street. The proposed cross-section, as I mentioned earlier, essentially, the, the existing road is, has two 12-foot lanes with a 12-foot turning lane in the middle. The improvements include adding a six-foot bike lane on either side and a five-foot sidewalk. In some of the areas of the, of Herb's Road, there's actually some cut required, and we'll actually be installing landscaping and a retaining wall, as shown in, in this cross-section. So the project design achievements, we minimized the right-of-way impacts. We minimized impacts to the oak trees, impacts to private driveways. There's a lot of driveways in this area, which, on, on the uphill side, which, which are going to have to be flattened out. We're working with the homeowners on that. We had to obtain 22 permanent easements to complete the project, and 20 temporary construction easements. Additionally, we provided the missing equestrian trail connecting east and west of Herb's Road, and, and again, a key factor was undergrounding of the overhead utilities. Project funding, this is a, a lot of information, but the project cost, as far as construction goes, about $4.7 million. That includes some, and some undergrounding of utilities. The key component to this is that this project was, was designed and developed when we didn't have all the funding identified. We got it shovel-ready, and staff was able, through, through hard work and diligence, be able to provide some grant funding for this project. As you can see, there's over $4.2 million of federal grant funding for the project. Additionally, it should be noted that $1 million of development, development money was supposed to be put into this, development agency money in this project as well. So our process, bid process, we'll bid in October of 2012. We expect to award in November, and the contract award will be in December 2012. We anticipate construction to begin in March 2013 and take about a year. If there's any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Ms. Bill Lopina?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, Mr. Finley. I, I'm just actually pleased to see that this is finally coming to fruition after all this time, and there are, there are, of course, concerns regarding financing, but aside from that, you mentioned the, the oak trees. When you say you minimize impact to the oak trees, what, what exactly will be the impact to the oak trees, which are very important to the residents who live there, and are also very important in lining the street and making it, giving it the rural feel that, that, that particular neighborhood and section is proud of?
Yeah, good evening. I'll take that questions. As part of the EIR, we, we did prepare assessment of the oak tree impact, and there are a few, I believe there were about eight oak trees that need to be removed as part of the widening, and some others are going to be impacted, so it will require monitoring during construction, but we do have mitigation to replace those oak trees. So that has been addressed in the EIR that was approved in 2005.
When are we, when we're replacing the oak trees, are we replacing them with identical specimen or with coastal scrub oaks that are not really equivalent to, say, the lobata or the agrofolia?
We will be working with our consultant and city staff to establish- We will be working with our consultant and city staff to establish the right species at a later date.
Okay, so that has not been determined yet?
Not yet.
Okay, that's good to know, thank you.
Councilmember Price?
In your presentation, you talked about the 22 right-of-way easements that were obtained from the property owners there, but I noted that there were 30 parcels of land that we needed to obtain. I'm just curious, what do we do about those other eight? I'm sure you've thought through that, I'm just interested to hear the answer.
So we had 30 parcels that required permanent tag. They were owned, I believe, by 24 owners. When we began the project, the project, you know, the intersection of Hillcrest and Herb's Road, we had more widening planned for that intersection, but when Freeway 23 was widened, we did lose some of the volume, and as a result of that, and the great impact that we were going to have at that intersection to private parcels, we did redesign, and 12 of the parcels were eliminated as part of the redesign work. So we end up with 22 owners, and I believe 30 parcels.
Thank you.
Any other questions of staff? All right, we have one speaker card, Mr. Kidway.
Nick Kidway, the Lone Ranger here. I ask a question I still, people would like to know, I thought this was a public hearing, so we are having a meeting with no public hearing, and spending all this money. What was the urgency? People don't hear, they're talking to each other. I wish most citizens were involved. It's good to talk about oak trees, but when are you going to talk about the beleaguered Thousand Oaks taxpayer? I mean, it's absolutely disgusting. Just the recommendation, authorized exception of congestion mitigation and air quality funds of $4.2 million. In fact, the gentleman is gone, but it's unbelievable, the numbers on the mini screens, which are hard to read, did not have the update, which is in your staff packet. $2,000 of city funds, $18,000 of state funds. Where is Governor Brown, I mean, asking for Proposition 30? Why? For PR, for public relations, for this project. I mean, what is wrong with our government? I mean, this is a US government? This is a public agency, you're spending $20,000 on PR? Well, I know what the money was spent on, I was just thinking, because the staff said hard work to get this $4.2 million, when the staff themselves said, the object is to retain a rural feeling, and spend air mitigation funds of $4.2 million, plus a grant from the Department of Transportation for $328,000, when it was, it is basically a NIMBY project. I was involved in '97, there was a council member that lived in the area, and she did not want to have a, and her neighbors did not want to have a major cross street, so the street was zoned from four lanes to two lanes. Where the hell is the Tea Party? I mean, I mean, why are there more people not reading this stuff and coming here and complaining, and we get inundated? I listened to KNX Radio, and the RNC has an ad against Julia Brownlee, that she wants to give away all kind of taxes. I mean, this crap is being shot to us, that's why people are sick and tired of politics. People want to turn the tube off, they don't want to read anything, and even good people that come over there, I mean, we have supposedly a people's representative, but all she's concerned about is oak trees. Save the taxpayers' money, that's your primary job, don't waste money. And I would like a motion to rescind this $20,000. Return, I mean, do a novel thing, return the $18,000 to the state, ask for the money back. This is not the proper use of funds. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kidway. Any comments by staff? Right? I have a motion. Councilmember Bill Lopina?
Thank you. I have a question regarding the EIR, which was conducted in 2005. How long is an EIR valid, and at what point in time does one have to be reordered?
We did, we forgot to mention in the background, we did update the EIR just last year. In fact, that was part of the process to get the right-of-way certification, you know, for the federal funding grant. It was all required, so in 2000, you know, just last year, I think we updated the EIR.
Councilmember Price, would you like to make a motion?
I could certainly do that. I would, have to get back to that page, though. I would move Staff Recommendations 1 through 3.
All right, Councilmember Price recommends 1 through 3. Staff Recommendations 1 through 3, can I have a vote, please?
Motion carries 4-0.
Committee Commission Board reports there are none. City Council's successor agency to Thousand Oaks redevelopment reports there are none. Council issues recommendations, none. City Manager?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, no additional follow-up. The next city council meeting will be on October 9th, and at this point in time, we have one public hearing anticipated, and that's for the proposed development agreement for a 55-unit condominium project at 1200 Newberry Road, formerly the Canal Mobile Home Park site. Department reports, it looks like we'll have an update on the solid waste rates study. It's the RFP, Request for Proposal, for the scope of work, so it's to initiate that part of that effort. Then we'll have the annual update for the fiscal year 2011, 12 Goals and Objectives Report. And I do want to point out, make a plug for some exciting events coming up this weekend. The Thousand Oaks Arts Festival will take place this weekend at the Civic Arts Plaza. I think this is our eighth or ninth year. We'll have some celebrities involved, including Jane Seymour, who lives nearby, she's always been very supportive of that. It's this weekend, Saturday, Sunday, 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM. And then on Saturday, a plug, also the 29th. So before you go to the Arts Festival, if you have little kids, you may want to go to the Kids Health and Fitness Day at the Thousand Oaks Community Center on Moore Park Road. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council.
I think the Kids Health Fair is the weekend after.
As I'm getting older, it's harder to read, you're correct, that's on September 29th. So this weekend, you can devote all of your attention to the Arts Festival, and then do that one on the 29th, I'm sorry.
Well, we're plugging away here. The New West Symphony also has its celebration that very same day, on the 29th.
All right, can I have the city attorney please announce the closed sessions?
Yes, we have two closed session items tonight. Conference with legal counsel on existing litigation, LeVoe versus City of Thousand Oaks, case number 56, 2011-00395160, CUPOSIM, pursuant to Government Code Sections 54956.9A, and existing litigation, 1200 Newberry LLC versus City of Thousand Oaks, case number 56, 2009-00337441, CUWMVTA, pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9A. It is unlikely I will have anything to report at the end of this closed session.
Thank you, and we are going to be adjourning to our regular meeting on October 9th, 2012. Good night, everybody.